Joe Weiss, I am the Chair of the Finance Committee. And I'm calling the Finance Committee to order. Just please just stand up if you belong to the Finance Committee so everybody can recognize you. Thank you. And then.
Hi there, Bijak, Chair of the Select Board. I'm calling the Select Board meeting to order. And we have Bernie Boudreau, myself, Dan Campbell. Anybody else? No? Okay. Okay.
At the end of June 30th, 2025, we send our balance sheet to the state and they certify the extra monies we are allowed to use in the following year. What was certified is general fund free cash at $681,472. The enterprise funds has $311,874. And the enterprise fund for ambulance is $294.
No, $94,000.
$94,000.
And like I said, this meeting's not using raised inappropriate, it'll be coming from available funds. And one of them may be from a rescission from a previous meeting we had. And the funds are hopefully being, are planning to be turned back. This year, we are dealing, the first one's an unpaid fiscal bill with the ambulance. Second one is rescinding that purchase in Bernadette that did not go through. We have to do that in order to be able to use those funds again. Article three, create a fire department stabilization account. Four and five consist of acquiring properties for our Northfield EMS. Article six is the properties to conservation, town properties conservation, and having it under their management. Article seven involves the library with them needing some HVAC improvements. Article eight is new flagpoles for our town hall in the library. Article nine, replenish the reserve fund. And 10 through 13 is sewer capital work that has to be done. And then Article 14 is creating a new revolving account that, to sponsor the Great River Challenge. So let us start with Article one. And I believe Matt was going to, Wilken Bright? Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Turn it on, first thing. Hi, everybody. We made it through my first year, and this is the worst thing I've done. A vendor didn't send us a bill in time for me to get it paid before July 1st. So we have an outstanding bill for some repairs that were done on one of our ambulances last year. The bill came in after we had already closed the fiscal year. And what I'm asking for is that I can use my current budget for repairs that's already been approved to pay a bill from last fiscal year. The work was done. We owe them the money. They know they're waiting for it. Article one is just asking us to pay a bill that hadn't come to us in time. I didn't even forget to submit it in a timely fashion. Just took a little while to get it. So the funds are going to come out of my current budget. I don't need to move any money anywhere. We have plenty of money in our repair line item in our current operating budget. And we just are going to ask for the vote so that we can pay this vendor the money. It's that simple, I think. Questions?
If anybody would like to get up, we ask that you use the microphone over there and just identify yourself and street where you're coming from.
Is Skip Donald here? Pardon me? Okay, so who's gonna, who's?
Oh, I can talk. Me too.
Oh.
So do I need this?
Okay. We're doing, are you doing?
I'm back. Article two, I'll start.
Okay, this is where we're rescinding the monies that we had set in for the Bernadette property, and everything fell through, so Matt will explain that to you.
Happy sad news. So we worked really hard to purchase the property in Bernadette. It all went to the state. Everything, stars were aligning. Unfortunately, even after the town supported the purchase of the property for EMS, our deal fell through. Turned out it just wasn't the right stars aligning. We knew we had that unicorn, and the unicorn got away from us. So since the town appropriated all that money, it's just been sitting. And by the way the world works in municipalities, we need to have a vote to rescind spending the money since the deal fell through. And what we're going to recommend from the Building Committee and from the Select Board and the Finance Committee is we take that money and we move it back into the emergency services building account so that it can still be used for building purposes. That's about what I've got on it. He doesn't have any more. Do we have questions on that?
Hi. I'm Morgan Parker Ave., Finance Committee. Lots of questions. Curious to know how, with the order of these articles, I see Articles four and five, and I know I'm jumping ahead and probably there's more conversation to come in a minute and a half, with the potential purchase gift or eminent domain or otherwise, to purchase two new spaces for an emergency facility. Would this just be moving this money out to move it back in, like, you know, two articles later, potentially? But it like, yeah.
Yeah, if the money is voted to be, yeah, Andrea.
So the simple answer is sort of. Because of due process, we have to rescind a formal vote to expend money. This is like the days of balancing a checkbook where you have to move from one column to the next and then back to the other one, even though it's going to end up where it needs to be. So because the money was appropriated for a very specific purpose to purchase that Bernadette property, we have to have a formal vote to take that money back, even though it's still sitting in an account, and reappropriate it somewhere within the town. So that's going to go into this building services account for now. Once it sits in that building services account, then we can come back as a town and say, this is how we'd like to distribute it. But rather than coming and saying, we want to bite off five different apples all at once, the first thing we have to do is secure this money back into the town's possession so it can be used. And then, yes, we'll talk about four, five, and other building services things that are coming down the road from the Building Services Committee. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I'll stand here all night until I ask.
Okay. Well, do you want me to do Article three?
Sure.
Okay.
Why don't I give the?
We're about the same height, so we can, can you hear me? Okay. So this came about, I went to a fire department meeting and was talking with Mike Quinn, who's the deputy chief. And what the firefighters used to do a long time ago, I think he had said back in 2003, which was before my time on the Select Board, so what they were concerned about is being able to put away money in a very visible way in front of town voters. And so that, if you're familiar with the, with the fire department, say versus EMS, fire has a lot of bigger, more expensive equipment. So when they replace something like a ladder truck, that's a lot of money. And what fire wants to be able to do is each year, put away, come before annual town meeting and put away an amount of money so that when, and you can see here on the right, there is a capital plan. So each department head, especially fire and EMS and police, have to put out over the different years when they think they're going to buy a major vehicle so that we're not creating a situation where we're buying many expensive vehicles in the same year, right? Nobody wants to have all their big bills come due, you know, like my house. I don't want to do my roof, a car, and the water heater all at the same time, right? You want to spread it out as much as you can. So that's the purpose of why they wanted to do it. And really, all we're doing with this particular article is setting up the account. We're not moving any money into it. They didn't want to confuse the issue with EMS and the other article that we just spoke about. They just want to set up the account. And then they'll come back at each town meeting and say, we think we need to put away X amount of dollars in this account. And then that will show the firefighters and the voters each year what they're tucking away for fire equipment. So then when we get to purchase a really large piece of equipment, then they'll be able to come and say, ah, now we can take X amount from our savings account, basically, and put it toward that expense. So that's really what it is. I don't know if you want to see anything else from, she's a town accountant, so not for Northfield, but.
It's not uncommon to have what you call these special purpose stabilization funds, and they can only be used for that particular purpose. So if we do set it up, it would be only for the fire department capital in order, once money's voted in, it would take a two-thirds vote, just like any other capital fund, to get the money out. If anyone has any, please step up to the mic.
What are they called, a stabilization account?
I don't know. I do, it's, oh, you do? Okay, go for it.
The reason it's called a stabilization, the reason it's called a stabilization account is to stabilize the tax rate. So if you had to buy a million dollar fire truck, you can imagine what happens to your tax rate. And then the next year, when you're not buying, it goes like this. But if you're putting the same amount of money away each year, you're stabilizing the tax rate. So they call them special purpose stabilization accounts.
Jenny Kilgore, is it on? Ferncliffe Avenue. So a future town meeting would decide to allocate funds to go into that account.
Correct. And that's a simple majority vote to allocate into it.
Next up is four, is, Matt, are you doing four and five?
Sure.
Sorry.
Both of you, yeah. This is a tag team.
So last year, just over a year ago, I came to this meeting for an info session and said, we really need a unicorn. We had found Bernadette's property, or it had been found by the Building Committee. And we said, this is going to be where we're going to live. Well, that fell through. So the last few months, we've been trying to figure out what next. The Building Committee, Emergency Services Building Committee, has been in place for quite a long time and had done a survey of all available sites to look for public safety facilities. Looking at this long, long list of facilities, and those of you that have been around and following this longer than I've been a part of it know, we've tried many, many different routes in Northfield, including multi-services in one place that didn't work. 41 Main Street, where we currently lease property from Sandry and have for about a decade or so, was identified by the committee as the number one site way, way back when for EMS, but was not optimal for EMS, fire, and police because of its small size. So as we rework everything through the Building Committee and try to figure out what the next home for EMS is going to be, we went back to this matrix and said, well, the number one site was 41. Maybe we should look back at it again, 41 Main Street. So the Building Committee talked about it. We made recommendation to the Select Board that we would ask them to please explore the possibility of purchasing or procuring it for us. And that's what they've been in the process of negotiating. So Article four is coming to you as the town to authorize the acquisition of 41 Main Street for the purposes of EMS. And 41 Main Street, if you're looking at this map and seeing different colors on it, is kind of a unique property. It's actually two parcels that are non-conforming parcels according to zoning bylaws because they've been there for a long time. The first yellow part in the front is where our garage is currently, and is a very, very small piece of land that that sits on. But the second parcel that's also owned by Sandry is this much larger piece that runs all the way back to East Street and actually has its own access, owned that way, all the way over to East Street. So the ask of the Select Board and what we're bringing to you at town meeting is the acquisition of both parcels for the purpose of us to move forward with building EMS out at that location, which really is an exceptional location for us. We've proven it for as long as we've been in existence that it works there. And we're really confident that by acquiring these parcels, and I'll talk about Article five because you're right, it does kind of all mush together. Acquiring this parcel along with 39 Main Street would do a couple of things. One, it would allow EMS to be there. Two, it would return non-conforming lots into one conforming zoning lot, meaning that now we're talking about less, what is it, variances? Thank you. Sorry, I'm not a zoning person, I'm a paramedic. It would bring the three non-conforming lots into one. It would meet most of our zone, or all of the zoning requirements, and it would give us the ability to actually look at building a facility on the site that would meet the needs of EMS with minimal ask for any sort of variances or moves to shift from the norm once we got to that property. So that's the negotiation that's ongoing. We currently pay the taxes as part of our lease for that. So when we talk about what is the net loss of purchasing a property in town, well, this property currently doesn't make the town any money in taxes because EMS is paying the taxes as part of our lease. So there wouldn't be any shift there. And in fact, on the EMS side of it, if the town owns the property and we have a building on it, it changes our operating expenses, just as the Bernadette property would have, if you remember talking about that. We own it, so we're not paying a lease on it. We're now just paying the maintenance, and that comes out of the EMS operating budget rather than having to pay a lease out of the budget as well. I'm going to pause. Questions so far about this side? Welcome back. You and I, we're staying up here.
Is Sandry willing to sell it?
The negotiation is ongoing, is what I am told from, it's in executive session.
And what was the other question I had? I'll come back.
Come on up.
As, as we're considering and going through these negotiations, in like the dream state where this all goes through and we're moving forward, have you started to think about, and I know this is like eight steps ahead, how to house the current functions in a place that will need to then be also under construction?
You want more? Okay. So here's what we got. We know that in order to build any facility, if we're talking about the fire service or EMS, because we're working on those from the Building Committee, and we have to keep the vehicles and the personnel somewhere while we build the new building. If all we do is look at 41 Main Street and we have to modify this site that we're on right now, we now have to think about temporary housing for the ambulances in our operation, not just our trailer, but the vehicles. And/or we have to come up with a plan to build around daily operations, which is exponentially going to increase the cost of doing the build. So what my suggestion, thought, plan would be is that if we're able to increase the size lot, Article five coming here that we're looking at, now we have more space, the existing building and the trailer that we're leasing now, which can be moved because it has wheels conveniently, we can shift it around on the lot, and we'll be able to continue to operate out of the building we're in now, along with the trailer, while we build a facility. Don't get the cart ahead of the horse. First, what I'm asking is that we get the properties. Bite that off. Then let's use intention and move forward with planning on that site so we're not just rushing headlong into something. Develop a plan for how we're best going to be able to occupy that space, maintaining beautiful historic Main Street, being respectful of all of our neighbors, and think about how we can build a facility on that parcel that's going to make the best use of it and continue to support EMS going well into the future. So the parcels are here. That's the first step. We're going to continue to operate out of what we have with the temporary for a little while. And then we're going to come back and say, again, when you asked about where are we putting the money, we're putting that money aside so that we can get the property. And then we can come in and look at all the property and come back with a plan for you rather than just trying to bite off a massive project with way too many unknowns.
Can I point to your board first? I'll speak there. I just don't know the scale, Matt, and I don't know the size of the plot. I don't know the road frontage because I see no scale, so bear with me. Bear with me. What I just said was, I don't, can you hear me? I don't see the scale, so I don't know the actual square footage. I don't know what the combined frontage is, so for my clarity, I got a couple of questions. One is, this is Main Street, correct?
Correct.
Main Street, when you're talking School Street?
East Street.
East Street. Okay, so this is running, this abuts privately owned land, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's, that's my question, Matt, to you, is, is that prudent? Do you need all the land? And secondly, even though there's no, it's not in the tax rule now, if you divided that land up and one of those homeowners wanted it, then it would go on a tax map to one of the homeowners, if you don't need it all.
Yeah. I like your question.
Okay, go. Shoot.
Go. Phew. Can somebody stub a toe or something? I'm really good at stub toes. All right, here we go. So the question was, we're looking at the property here to acquire. There's private property all the way around it. If EMS didn't need all of this property, could it go to someone else? Or what would we use it for? Second part first. The majority of this green space is all wetlands. It is not buildable. It is not usable.
Key to know. Key to know. Key point.
There's not really anything that can be done with it, which means that us having this space up to the front, and there are some, so why would we acquire all of it through? Well, because this doesn't do anything, so to make the acquisition just really, we take the whole property, or we ask for the whole property and go all the way through to East Street, right? Otherwise, this is just truly orphaned. It also protects the abutters on both sides. And if we start to talk about five and Article five, and we go on to the next property over, that adds the frontage that we needed along the state highway and gives us space outside of the wetlands, which roughly kind of come along here, to allow us space to be able to build. Does that, did I miss any parts of your question?
No, no. You provided some data that I needed. Thank you.
Of course.
Joe Grafflin, Old Perry Road. Familiar with the Sandry conversation going back 30 years? And I know they removed a storage tank there. Has the property been cleared of contaminants so that you don't have, you're not taking on a burden?
That's correct. To our knowledge, there is no environmental concerns with the property. The tanks were removed without any concerns, and there's no.
I was, if Skip was here, if the fire chief was here, he knows that his deputy actually inspected the tanks before they came out to verify. So from a, the fact that we've had Skip for 50 years means that that actually happened while Skip was chief. But because Skip works for Sandry, he had to absolve himself from the actual work and gave it to somebody else on the fire department to do. I think that was Dave Quinn, but don't quote me. Yeah.
So, and then the second question was, I heard a statement about Concom and Utilities. Can anybody bring clarity to that on the, on the remaining parcel? In other words, it's not serviceable?
Correct. If we were, if going to do anything with that, I think what Matt's pointing out, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I think we've out, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I think we've worked together long enough that I kind of know, the, if we were going to do anything with that, let me just, with this?
Correct, yeah.
It would have to, and there are no plans for that, it would have to go through Con's Com.
That much I understand, but I heard the word utilities come in there, and I didn't know.
Like sewer, for example. It's, East, East Street has a sewer line and every, which is surprising to a lot of people, is there's no sewer connections south Main Street.
So that's why they have a 50,000 foot requirement versus 35,000 square foot?
Say that again?
Non-conforming, and conforming lots, 35,000 if you have public utilities, sewer, 50,000 if you don't, because you have to accommodate septic system.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Okay, and then just to extend that, because you might, or others might be interested, is this has a septic, right? Because it's not connected. It's an older septic, and then when we get on to the next property, we'll talk about the state of that property as well. And just to Bob's point on numbers, Andrea, correct me if I'm wrong, this yellow is 136 feet. This is 50. So if we put them together, it's 186 would be the frontage, and you need at least 150. Yeah.
Also, the side lot of the yellow is 100, so actually that's not deep enough for a side lot.
This, this is 100.
100 feet.
Yeah.
So none of the three lots are actually conforming for rolling.
Yeah. So like other parts of Northfield, I think this was done in the days before zoning, although most of the properties, as you can tell, are a lot bigger. The wetlands is, is the darker pieces here.
So the access route from East Street doesn't give you anything?
It's not meant to give us anything.
Is it?
It, what it gives us, this, this access here, oh, sorry. This access here is not to, to access the property. This is a part of the parcel. We need this piece of parcel to actually equal a conforming lot size.
No, I get that. It's just, I'm intrigued by that.
Even though we're not going to build on it.
I'm intrigued by that.
If anybody knows the story of how we ended up with these parcels and then this little weird cutout, come find me someday. I'd love to hear the story, because I can't find it yet.
It's not unique. It's not that unique.
No, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm just curious too.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will say, living in Northfield, somebody somewhere in Northfield knows, right? They're going to come out in the next couple of weeks.
Article Five?
Yeah, Article Five. Let's move on.
We're going? All right.
Yeah, going. Go for it.
So the other half of Article Four, or Article Five after it, as all of you likely know, and if you don't know, 39 Main Street sustained an incredible tragedy last year. They had a structure fire in the house, which, or the summer, which displaced two families. The house is untenable, and the family has decided that it is not rebuildable, recoverable, and is moving on with their life to redevelop somewhere else. They have come to the town and said that because of this, they've moved their family off. They would like to donate the property to the town. A donation equals a dollar in municipal world. That's a part of it. In order for them to move on, they would like to donate it to us with the understanding that the town would accept the responsibility to raise and remediate the structure that has been burned out. We've gone and looked at all the estimates and the inspections that are out there and gotten multiple estimates back on what the cost to do this work would be, and to be able to abate the home, which was necessary before we can dispose of it, and then raise and demolish the structure that's on the property to bring it to level, is about $110,000, including sort of the deed costs, the legal costs, that we would have to go through to acquire that property. So there is an expense with that property, but it's also one that A, gives us the lot size that we're talking about to bring it into conformance. It's the ability for us to be able to remove that property, that blighted building at this point, which nothing can be done with, demolish it and bring it down to the ground, and then hopefully be able to help this family also move forward. There's nothing that can be really built on this site because it's a non-conforming lot. So unless the current owners, my understanding is, were going to rebuild on the exact footprint within a certain timeframe, we would be back at zoning and everything else for anybody else to be able to do anything with this property. So Article Five is asking for permission to accept this donation, and again, Article Five works in concert with Article Four, which is why it sits before it. Article Five alone doesn't really do much for the town, just to be clear. So we want to make sure, they have to be separate articles, but they really are connected together, and that they would donate the property to us, we would take on the responsibility of remediating the site, and then we would take the time to go forward. We've worked with the highway department to look at the cost to remove the building after it's been abated, so that's going to save on work. That will be a very good cost for us, basically, because we're going to do the work within ourselves. They believe that depending on how much snow we get, that could also happen through the winter, which is an optimal time based on the highway department's workload to be able to do this work. So it would bring the building down, it would make the site safe, and it would also make use of some time during the winter for the highway department.
It's kind of an Article, oh, sorry, Misha Storm, Burnham Road, and your librarian. It's kind of an Article Four question. So does it not cost us anything to buy the Sandry property?
Oh, it'll cost us to buy the Sandry.
But we don't know how much it is.
Correct.
Not yet.
Yeah.
We will, what I will say is, nobody's going to ask you to vote to buy the property without giving you a number. The negotiations are ongoing. We have two weeks left till town meeting, or the select board does, to finish what they're doing. So we wanted to introduce the concept. The number will come out in the motion.
So, yeah, Morgan O'Brien, Parker Ave, similar question. Does, so does Article Four, because now, yeah, this number is really helping me understand what's happening. Article Five, we are taking money out of, ideally, the emergency services building account to begin all of this work and do that this winter. But in Article Four, it's similar to Article Six, where we're saying, hey, let's free up, like, give the select board the permission to do something and to get the ball rolling so that we can start making decisions?
No.
No.
No. Oh, um, so I'm going to repeat what I said at the last select board meeting, and this is for everybody, not just for you, but I think it's helpful, is the language in the warrant is formal and not really terribly specific, right? Everybody always asks. The details come in the motion and the handbook that gets handed out at the town meeting, right? So this is all legal language, and if, the way that I explain warrants is, if you just think of it as a big formal agenda, each article is actually a topic, and some of them are small topics, like Matt's EMS bill. Some of them are larger and more complicated topics that you don't, if you put all of the money into your legal, legal posting on all of those, and then you even minutely adjust something, you've kind of screwed up your warrant. So...
The money for Sandry, though, would come from?
Right.
The, the purchase for Article Four?
Right.
When it goes into motion form would come from that building account?
Yeah.
If that's what you were asking.
Trying to address a few things, so, all right.
Yeah, I think the core of my question is, and I don't mean to be rude, but like, why are you telling me about Article Four if we're not doing anything immediately with it?
Because we are. The select board is going to be meeting on Monday night, and I can't tell you what the detail, because we're still in executive session.
Gotcha. Okay.
Much as I would love to.
Do their magic, had to get to info session and start the conversation.
Yeah.
Hi, Karen Boudreaux, Old Wendell Road and Sewer Department. This question may be early, but the site with the house fire, there's other buildings on there, such as the garage. Does anybody have any information on what will be leveled and what won't be leveled?
The, the whole property will be raised, all structures.
So we, I assumed, okay, it's on Main Street, it must have water and sewer. Apparently, it doesn't have sewer. Does the second parcel, the way the house was, have any advantages with that issue?
It does.
Yes. You were like, you're going to get an award tonight for asking, like, the perfect segue.
Your check's in the mail for bringing the appropriate question at the appropriate time. So 39 Main Street does have a septic system that was Title Fived in 2022 as a viable system for four-bedroom home, which is more than adequate flow for what we would likely need. There is still the final engineering that would need to happen, but it has been in operation. It has been pumped. I have talked with the Board of Health and with people who know about septics within there, and the presumption, assumption is that, yes, that septic system is there and is approved. We need to go to the board for formal approval to use it and such, but there is a working, functioning, four-bedroom sized septic sanitary system on that property, which, again, makes it valuable.
Dan Campbell, H63 Old Wendell Road. And the reason that's important is the septic system at the Sandry location is failing. So if you, so that's one of the benefits. So when you look at these figures here, and you figured that they're just going to use a Sandry project, it would cost roughly about $50,000 to put in a new septic system. That is not needed because it, like, having this property, you already have a viable septic system. So when you look at those figures, yes, it's a lot of money, but we're also going to save $50,000. So it's kind of a wash there. So just so you know, that was taken into consideration too, when we were just looking at all of the discussions for the two pieces of property.
Good for your negotiation, too.
Okay, are we ready to move on to Article Six, and I believe B, in regards to the conservation properties? This is in regards to Article Six, Control and Custody of Properties for Conservation purposes.
Well, we've tried. Thanks to everyone who's offered suggestions over the last two town meetings, last fall and last spring. The select board has put forth at both town meetings prior to this, finding a way to deal with the 20 or so, actually, it's more than that, of properties that the town, the town owns through the tax, they're sitting with the tax collector, not with the select board. So what the select board talked about this summer was how do we go at this process, rather than dealing with all 20 or so all at once? And we took a look at these on Parker Ave around Center Cemetery, if you're familiar with the cemetery. So we thought these are all related, they're all contiguous, they're all around a historical piece of property. And the histor, I'm putting on my little Historical Commission hat, so I'm now the vice chair, and the Historical Commission has spent more time on Center Cemetery. So Lindsay McCarthy and Sandy Campbell have been, out of about 2,000 gravestones, have been clean, have cleaned up so far about 1,000. So we've, and this is with the VFW volunteers, Bob, I think you've been involved, as well as other folks who have family in there. So we're at the point of spending a lot more time and attention on Center Cemetery, and we're very interested in the possibility, since the cemetery goes back to the 1700s, we're interested in, is there anything actually around the cemetery? Because not everybody was always placed in a cemetery. Sometimes there's little cemeteries on people's property, and sometimes when people were poorer or from a different group, then they would be placed outside of a cemetery. So we're actually interested in some more research around that. And I talked with Joanne McGee from Open Space, as well as, she's also a trustee with the land trust. And Joanne's opinion was that the properties were too small. Also, I think it's two of them, Andrea, or three of them. Two of them used to be quote unquote town dump back in the day, back before my time. I didn't go down there for the dump. So we've had a few dump locations, actually, in Northfield. I don't know if people know that, but, so two of those properties would not actually be things that would easily be sold or given to somebody else, and they're right near the cemetery. So the thinking was, also because these are relatively small, that no land trust is really interested in properties that have some sort of quote unquote bad history on them, like town dumps, and also, they're not interested in small pieces of property. Most of the land trusts are really interested in saving large pieces of acreage with respect to farming and other uses, like open space. So we thought this might make sense, rather than trying to deal with all 20 properties, is just to bring up five or six that are all physically contiguous and have a narrative around that, that involves the Historical Commission, open space, and potentially Con's Com as well, because one of the properties down on Great Meadow has, has wetlands on them as well. So this is Northfield, we have a lot of wetlands. So that's the proposal, is that if you vote yes on this, what it does is it tells the select board specifically, not creatively or differently, to take those properties and put them into what's called Article 97, which is along the, similar lines to, to a land trust. And 97 just basically means that we're stating, the town would be voting, that those properties could not be developed or sold off. And the only way a future select, current or future select board could take them out of 97 is to actually petition both houses in the mass legislature and actually get a special legislation on that. Questions? Joe? And Joe's from the Historical Commission as well.
The wording is pretty straightforward on that article until you get to the comma after such purpose. I'm wondering if the article could be written without that final batch of language, which says, "or take any other action relative thereon," or, or in relation thereto. And the reason I ask that is because it's unclear to me whether "or take any other action relative thereon," or "in relation thereto" is relevant to the, to giving the property to the select board to do that, as opposed to the actual Article 97. In other words, how do you tie in the guarantee of an Article 97 conservation with the language, "or take any other action relative therein," or "in relation thereto"?
Remember...
Can it? Yeah.
The motion actually would not have other options attached to it.
No, that motion wouldn't, but it feels like it leaves a back door for that property.
But this isn't the motion, so the motion would actually do what you're saying at town meeting.
So this, this is not the motion that would be made.
No, that's not the motion. That's just...
It would come after purpose.
After such purpose?
Period.
Period, yeah.
Yeah, that would be the motion.
Yeah. That, that would, that would be wonderful.
Yeah. The, most of the article language is... The, most of the article language is, it's template, right?
Okay.
But the motion is where you want to, if you have a concern, and I would say this to everybody, not just to Joe, is if you have a concern, you always look at the motion because you're, the town voters are voting on the motion.
Okay.
Not on the article. The article is just your agenda topic, basically. And then the motion that comes up is the one that seals the deal, so to speak.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for asking that.
Anybody else? If not, Article Seven, Misha Storm will address the HVAC article at the library.
Hi, Misha Storm, Burnham Road and the library. So, Article Seven is asking for funds from Free Cash to cover the replacement of our dying AC system. The current system was installed in 1999, and 26 years is beyond average lifespan for an AC system. We've had several expensive repairs in the past few summers. And on top of that, the coolant that this current system uses is about to become unavailable. So this project will replace the current AC with a mini-split system. And we will have two condenser units, so those are the outdoor units. And then six air handler units, those are the indoor units that are, you know, on your wall. So it, so it will replace our five current AC units. And then also add a sixth to go in our local history room. Right now, there's nothing in there, and that's where our archives are, and that's bad for archival materials. Let's see, and then, so, more about mini-splits. The new system will replace the AC, but it will also become our heating system for most of the year. In the deep winter, maybe not, but most of the year. This will bring down our oil usage significantly, and it'll bring down our overall energy costs. Even with the cost of electricity going up, these units are more efficient, so they're gonna use less energy, whether it's oil or electric. And that goes for the winter, when we're using them for heat. And then also for the summer, for cooling, they'll be more efficient than our current system. So we will be saving money on our monthly bill. It's estimated a little over 2,000 each year on our energy costs overall. So, okay, money. So the project is quoted at 85,000. I applied for a Sustainable Rural Libraries grant, and so that got us about just under 10,000. And that money is already in hand. So the request from Free Cash is 75,000. I'm hoping we don't actually have to spend that much. I will be submitting a CPA application to cover the local history room unit. So that's about, somewhere between five and seven, I'm gonna say seven. And, and then with the help of the Energy Committee, we will be applying for rebates from Eversource. And that could, that's potentially 22,500. So with, if all these things happen, then the cost comes down to 46,000. And I will do my darndest to make sure they happen.
Anybody have any questions, any comments? Oh, okay.
Okay.
Article Eight, Bob Henry.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, you're up.
Come on, Tyler, how do you do this? Tyler, remind me, it is cordless today. It's new generation of cordless microphones. I just haven't figured out how to remove it, kidding. Yeah, I'm a veteran, I'm involved in many veterans' organizations. And I travel a lot through town, I travel all over the Northeast and even down south. And I'm basically retired, retired Air Force. And flags are near and dear to my heart, you know? They're symbolic for all of us, our nation's flag, I love to see it flown. This Monday, we laid a veteran at rest in Calvary in Greenfield. I do burials all over New England, just as a volunteer, participate, pay our last honors, our last respects. Today, I got a reminder from Pat Kinsella and others at the Pioneer Valley School District that reminded me of Ari Brown Weeks, who was a fatalite in Iraq, 23-year-old young Army. Sad story, anyway, Ari Brown, if anyone wants to look it up. So these are near and dear to my hearts, and so, flags, in order to honor these lost members, you have to have a flag and you have to fly it at half-staff. Right now, our flags are at half-staff. I try to remain apolitical. We know how, you know, the culture is today, and it bothers all of us. But the fact of the matter is, flags today are at half-staff for Dick Cheney, you know, Vice President under Bush. So I just wanted to share that with you, in order to pay our respects to those. The Veterans Flag is an interesting flag. I just wanna set the stage a little bit, real quick. The Veterans Memorial Flag, we wanna keep that, veterans, Veterans Memorial only, sacred flag. And that's by my fellow veterans on the Veteran Committee. And I'll convey this, that wasn't my original thought, but I respect their thought and their philosophy on that. I think that is important. But I feel strongly that we should have the flag back at the library. And I'm not condemning Misha for this, but over the years, we had a flag there that slowly, the flag had disappeared from it. And I'm a little guilty for not bringing it on the limelight earlier. And then the flag pole, it's actually the flag, did this thing stop?
No, no, I'm.
Just you?
Just making adjustments.
Did they pay you to tune me out? Shut me off? You're good. So, so then first, first the flag itself came down, it was probably old and worn out. And I traveled through, and I'm guilty, like I said. And then later on, I noticed, holy smokes, the flag pole's gone, what happened? So anyway, it's just a fact of nature, what happens, things get old and they get worn out. So I kinda drummed this up and B, and I made a big stink about it, a big to-do about it, because it's near and dear to my heart, squeaky wheel gets the grease, I'm hoping, I'm hoping real quick. So I brought it up to, hey, can we get it back? And Misha, Misha put it back to the trustees, and there was a vote, right? Vote? And, and they voted that they would, they agree, basically, let's get a flag pole back at library. So with that being said, so one is, this is for two poles, just to set the stage. One is to replace an old pole that is no longer at the library, that historically was. And the other one is to put a flag pole back where, I don't remember this one. I grew up around here, but I lived all over for many, many years. And I'm fortunate that I had the opportunity to return here on many, many occasions, and then currently reside here. But there was another flag pole at Belcher Monument, the big stone watering trough to the left-hand side of the Town Hall. So the Flag Committee, we talked about it, we'd like to see the one come back to the library, and we'd like to see the one come back to the Town Hall proper. So with that being said, and my quote is, I actually have some documents here, and the reason I have these is, is there's some state guidance on whether or not a flag must be flown. And I know there's a lot of discussion on that. And I know there's, you know, there's a reason we have two lawyers. There's a reason we have a defense attorney and a prosecuting attorney, because they see things differently. And I was told the town had a reading from their lawyer that the state law or the interpretation was that the town didn't have to have one. I got off the phone Monday after the funeral with the Governor's Office, and I have a different interpretation. And their interpretation is closer to my interpretation. So one is, is it legally required, is it mandated? That's one question. Because I know, it says, section six is, "The flag of the United States and the flag of the Commonwealth shall be displayed on the main or administration building of each public institution of the Commonwealth. The flag shall be of suitable dimensions and shall be flown every day when the weather permits." So that's my stance, or what I hang my hat on, besides being personally involved in what I've already said, veterans' causes, and the fact that we honor different people throughout the Commonwealth, when and if they pass away, based on their contributions to society. There's some towns that actually have it written in their flag policy, the selectmen have their right to order the town's flag as half-staff. If they're a longtime contributor to the town of Northfield, then the Select Board can meet, and they can actually have control over their flag, which would be that newly flag we wanna get back up at the Town Hall, and over the flag at the library. If you have somebody that was a selectman for 20 years or something, and that person passes away, you might wanna lower that flag to give that some publicity and make us all think about what that person might have contributed to, and why we wanna pay our respects to that person. So I think that answers a little bit of the background in why I'm so interested in getting this done. It's near and dear to my heart, means a lot to me. A lot of my fellow veterans, Frank here, he served an entire career in the Army, traveled all over the world. Unfortunately, we carry caskets together, and we drape caskets together with our nation's flag. And we fold them and present them to the widows and the family. This is what it is, $7,000. I know it sounds a little bit expensive. Reason is, I figured they should stand the test of times. I went to non-painted, satin-finished aluminum poles, hurricane-proof, 115 miles an hour, 25 to 30-foot tall, external halliards, so you don't need a key or anything to raise and lower, and external solar lights for no maintenance. So that's why I went with these. If we find them, if we find them next year cheaper, then by all rights, we'll shop around. Like I said, I'm very, those that know me, know I'm very fiscally prudent, and I'm a keen shopper. And right now, I have these two locked in, right about $6,700, $6,800. And the reason I went with the two, too, is if we buy two from the same company now, we only have to pay shipping for one. So if we buy one now, we buy one next, the shipping's about, can be about $800, between $500 and $800. Well, you're looking at 30-foot, they're not pieced-together poles, we're at a 30-foot spun pole. So any questions for me, any concern?
There comes Jenny.
I'm just wondering about the modern rules about flag honoring. And is it true that if you shine a light on a flag, it can be up all night? Is that true? And so, nobody has to raise and lower the flag, we don't have to worry about weather. Okay, so that just simplifies things, yeah?
Right, these flags are all-weather flags. The reason for the light is so you don't have to take them in and retire them at night. The school, I take my hats off to the Northfield Elementary School, they have student participation, and they raise and lower the flag because they do not have a lit pole. As you'll see, some of these poles are painted white, and the paint over the years degrades. Believe it or not, this pole out front was, was put up, and was actually, has a plaque on it from World War II. This was put up in 1942. So I don't know if the one at the library had a marker or a plate or anything, I don't really have the history on that. But just to give you a little bit of history on how far these go back. So believe me, these flags are gonna outlive me, I guarantee it. That'll be my guarantee, if not, come to get me. Any other questions? Yep, Joe, anybody, Misha?
Is Tommy installing them?
I chuckle, because it's a great question, is Tommy installing them? I meant to get back with Tommy, I have, I have an 85% nod from Tommy. I just haven't got the file yet, no kidding, I can do it. I imagine he's hesitant, we're talking about Tom Walker, the Highway Superintendent. I think the only reason I probably don't have a hard from him yet is, I probably haven't pushed him hard enough, and it's just been in normal, general conversation. So I don't wanna put words in his mouth that he's promised me he'll do it. But I'm sure, as long as he has the appropriate time to do it, that he will do it. It's, the install's pretty basic, but yeah, there shouldn't be any additional charge for an install.
Yeah, there's worry that there's additional cost.
Yep, no. Yep, no, and if there is, we'll take care of it somehow. Yep, Joe?
Establish part of my question.
Sure.
The other part is, we have a wonderful steel fabricator in Berniston, who's incredibly talented.
Steel shed?
Helped me build a couple.
Mike Snow, yep, yep.
Did anybody throw a set of specs at him and say, what can you do to give us a high-quality?
We're on B and C TV, so be careful what you say. No, I love Mike Snow, and the quality of work, second to none. But we had grates done, we had grates done just for our barbecue chicken, just the cost of materials today. And the great grills and the fabrication material and everything, and the cutoffs, were $800 for those, for grills, small, horrible grills. So I will gladly do that, I will gladly do that. I didn't check with Mike, but I'm just telling you, labor costs today and material costs today are sky-high compared to companies that actually turn these things out, you know, that are all set up to do it. 30 feet's a pretty, pretty big project to be affordable. But I will, I will gladly, I got time, I'll take Mike, our specs from these. I've known him, you know, for a long, long time, yep. Any other questions, anybody? Concerns? Do I have your support? Come on, thank you.
Okay, next article is the Article Nine, and this is a transfer to the Reserve Fund. What happened, what, to make a long story short, as you know, our Fire Chief is retiring by the end of the year. And meantime, we have to look for a new chief, start looking. There were grants available, but given the state budget and everything else, that program went on the wayside. And we were forced, with a, we were pushed, well, not pushed, but we agreed that this search had to start sooner than later, and in order to get the, who's doing it?
I can.
Colin?
I can talk to it.
Okay.
It's not a search?
No, it's not a search.
Yeah.
It's a.
I think what would be helpful is if you just explain the Reserve Fund, and then I can tell, I can tell what the purpose is and how, yeah.
So we were asked for $12,500 for this consult, this consultant. And knowing that had to be done sooner than later, and knowing it's the beginning of the year, and we haven't even gone through winter with everything breaking and the snow, it's like, we can't use a quarter of our fund right, you know, it has to be replaced. So, we agreed to the Reserve Fund transfer, the Finance Committee. And this is the article, "To Replace Those Funds." Those refunds will be replaced with free cash, it will not be raised and appropriated, since we already raised and appropriated it once, we're not gonna do that to you again. So it'll be from free cash to replace the funds that we were asked to pay for this consultation, this consultant.
Yes, so, as you can imagine, with a chief who's been literally on duty for 50 years, there's a lot in his head that we need to get down on paper, basically. So we have a consultant who is an ex-fire chief, and has worked with, specifically with, fire departments for a long time in Western Mass. So we felt that it was helpful, especially after spending a couple of years on the Select Board working with Skip and the Fire Department. One thing I've learned, and I've told Mike Quinn and Skip, for example, I'm not gonna tell you how to fold a hose, but I do know that you need to document some of your things from a safety and risk standpoint for the town overall. And they agreed, so, and because this is Skip's retirement year, basically, his, his, his last tour, if he was a band, we wanted to make sure that we had somebody who could quote-unquote "speak fire" and speak administratively, and produce documentation that will carry the department forward. The department does a lot of great things, very, very well. And this will actually document some things that they're doing incredibly well, such as recruiting and training new firefighters. Unlike a lot of fire departments in Western Mass, Northfield, we appointed six new firefighters this year, which is incredible. So this is just a consultant, and we needed this consultant now before we got into the budget year, because if the consultant makes some recommendations for the Fire Department, we're going to need to have that in the Fire Department budget. So, many thanks to the Finance Committee for pulling the funds from the Reserve Fund. And now we're just going to put some money back into the Reserve Fund for other quote-unquote emergencies.
Questions?
Questions? Okay, well, the next three articles of.
Four.
Yeah, was it, oh, four, 10, 11, 12, and 13, Karen Boudreau and Isaac.
Karen Boudreau, who's the Chair of the Sewer Commission, and Isaac, who's our.
He's our sewer, he's our full-time. He's our sewer, he's our full-time-
Superintendent.
Superintendent.
Yes, correct, very important.
They will address the next four articles, and those are all coming from their enterprise funds, at their certified enterprise funds-
Yep.
And the reasons, what their articles are.
Karen Boudreau, Sewer Commission, and Isaac Golding, our Chief Operator and Superintendent. All four of these articles are, will be coming from our enterprise fund now that it is certified. Article 9 and 10, 9 is a new manhole. I'm sorry, 10, 10, 11. 10 is a new manhole on Moody Street that was put in. As part of the Article 11, there was a, um, there was a sanitary sewer overflow from a pipe sewer main on Moody Street that was punctured with a new utility pole, not us. When people moved into an empty building, that is when it came to light in September. Isaac responded to the call, and during that, it was determined with the length of run and the ability to clean out more easily, we could, while the ground was open, put in a new manhole at a lower cost than going back and trying to re-dig and put it in later. So that will be coming from our enterprise fund. It is $3,060. Questions? Okay, all right. Article 11, uh, again from the enterprise fund, for the pipe repairs that were augured by the utility pole. That has been submitted to the insurance company, it's a $9,000 cost, that a, um, insurance claim has been submitted. We don't know yet whether that's going to be approved. If we get the insurance money, then the $9,000 from this article, as of June 30th, rolls right back into our enterprise fund. No, no, no fuss, no foul. If we are denied insurance on this, we still have to cover the loss, and that's the $9,000. It is early in the budget year, we've seen more breakage this year. So we did not wanna take a hit of $9,000 to our operating budget, effective in approximately October and November, so that's why we went after the enterprise funds. Questions? Good, wow, all right. Article 12, from the enterprise fund, flow metering. There are a couple ways to do this, buying equipment or bringing in a service to do additional flow metering. And that is for $20,000, and right now, we are still in the research phase of do we buy and maintain, which has its own, a water sampler for effluent water, a water sampler for, uh, effluent water sampler. Sewage coming into the plant has an, um, an in, an input, an inflow water sampler that, uh, in addition to labs that Isaac runs, measures what's coming in, consistency, all these things. Before we release the water, after it's been cleaned, before it goes back into the wild, there is an effluent sampler. The one that is in the plant is at least 10 years old. It is in very sad shape, it has been worked on, um, it is rusting out, and it is possible that an interior model of sampler was put in an exterior situation with lots of humidity. That was about 10 years ago. What we're seeing, of course, as you've heard over and over again, is a lot of things are having to be replaced. This is, this is one of them, and we are putting in an external capable effluent sampler. We're not, we're not going to Home Depot and buying one for $1,300 that you might put near your aquarium. We are buying one that is industrial strength, and that is, that is 12,000. Questions? Oh, please ask, guys, we got a question. No questions. We're good, thank you.
Thank you, Karen and Isaac. Last article, looks like the last article. Is anybody from the Recreation Commission here? Okay, so I will- Okay, so I'm gonna just go ahead with it, explain what it is, okay. Article 14, it's just adding through a bylaw, another revolving account. This revolving account, as opposed to the regular recreational revolving account, is centered around the Great River Challenge, which I believe happens, what, late September, early fall? Early October. And, um, they will collect the fees, any donations, any expense, any, any sort of revenue, and then they will spend that revenue to pay for the expenses needed for that Great River Challenge. They, they are estimating about $35,000 a year, but it's, it's based on what they bring in, and can only be paid out what's been brought in. So it's just a legal, uh, a, a legal acceptance of allowing them to do that.
You're just setting up the account.
Yeah, we're just setting up the account. It was agreed that it should be kept separate from the regular recreational-type programs, and this way, if anyone ever asks- tracking purposes, it allows them to do that. Any questions? Well, I guess that's it, thank-
I do have a question.
Oh, what, okay, go for it.
Go ahead, try it.
Ask a sewer question while you're up there.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I already asked, I was like a bunch of questions, thank you. Yeah, for the purposes of tracking and, and fund accounting, does this effectively just make its own budget line item in the, in the spreadsheets?
It's, uh, it, it, there's usually a fund called special revolving accounts, and in the, if you ever noticed at May Town Meeting, we have a list of, a list of these revolving accounts. I think Council on Aging has one, Recreation already has one. And we vote a limit, a spending limit on each one, and, uh, it, it's, it's just part of the bylaw in Mass General Law.
It's just a funding, it's just a funding mechanism. No money ever comes from the town for it. It's money in, money out. And it allows them to track whether or not this program is paying for itself, because that's how they wanna make sure that they're, like, there's a summer program for the camp, there's a summer, and they split them up so that they're able to track and budget for their programs. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, if that's it, I wanna thank everybody for coming, I wanna thank for the people who spoke to their articles, and we'll see you on Wednesday, November 19th, at 6:30 at the, uh, school.
Just wanted to let everybody know that I will be doing the motion warrant as soon as possible, probably not till the, after the Select Board meeting on the 10th. So that will get posted prior to the meeting, you won't have to wait for the handout. I will get the motion warrant up the week before town meeting, so you'll get a chance to see all those motions as well. Select Board, motion to adjourn?
Dan Campbell says yes.
I need a second first.
Second, Dan Campbell says second.
And Bernie, yes, BS, okay, thank you.
Do I need to adjourn FinCom?
And we're adjourning at 7:21.
Okay. Okay, uh, motion to adjourn FinCom? Okay, um- All those in favor? Okay, Gail Weiss, yay.
Bernie Brady, yes.
Okay.